Call the meeting in order. We'll start with a prayer. Steve Ayers from Life Connect Church.
That's right. Lord, I thank you all for today. I thank you for the hearts that are here and I continually pray for the men and women that serve our community. Lord, I pray that you give them wisdom and guidance. I pray that you light the path. And, Lord, I pray that you would just bless our community. Lord, I pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bassett.
Here.
Juan.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Clipper. Here. Okay, thanks to Mike Mark to build in for me two weeks ago. You did a fine job.
Good job, Mike.
Um, approval of the regular council meeting minutes, October the 5th. Any additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve. The minutes have written.
Second.
My second.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Okay, have before you the approval of the bills?
Just one slight change. It doesn't change the amount. The one Hicksville Hardware for $275, that's actually supposed to be paid to the contractor that did the work. So I'll have to get with Cheryl when she's back.
What, um, the batter shop plumbing for 104 Shaw Terrace? Is that a personal residence?
Yep, and we had a problem with our system. So, but in a case like that, then we take care of the bill. It was a no doubter. It was on our end, so.
And then, um, the Lowe's business, almost $919. It doesn't say what it's for. It says doors and wood. Like who?
Uh, one is for a back door for our building. Uh, since we had the back redone, we had to take down all the framing and whatnot. So they went ahead and got framing around the windows and just some general lumber while they were there. Your guys did the work? Yeah, they painted the wall and put up the new window frames and all that kind.
And then one more question. I've seen this before, but the metal link technologies, the PD Facebook, almost like $10, I-95. What, what is that charge? Why are we paying for Facebook?
I don't know anything about Facebook or Facebook.
Is that with Hicks TV or not?
Uh, we have a local hotspot. We pay for the rights and we don't use them.
I think it's for their Facebook account.
For the PDs?
Yeah.
Why are we paying for somebody's?
The PD has a Facebook account and I don't know if there's a fee for it or not.
Well, it'd been one of those pages. You'd have to ask Cheryl how it came about.
Through Metal Link, if that makes any sense.
That's first I've heard of it.
Of having it?
I've seen it before.
No, I've seen it. I've seen it, but I don't know how it's structured.
It's a very popular thing. It is very popular.
Well, never put in our budget.
I assume Metal Link.
No, we're paying for it.
Metal Link's the one charging for, for access.
But Facebook's free.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I'm wondering if it's going Metal Link's and one's doing it. They're going down.
Oh, I see, yeah.
There are also things that you can pay for on Facebook.
PD Facebook. I've seen it before. I didn't know. Advertising, yeah.
I, I'm not sure what the charge is for that, but there are, when you're on Facebook, there are things, services you can purchase from Facebook to help enhance or improve your, your, getting your message out on your Facebook page. So it could be something like that, where they automatically get, they have some deal with Metal Link who they pay Facebook, so they automatically get their posts boosted or something. I, I don't know. I know that there are some things you can pay for on Facebook to enhance your page.
Cheryl will be back on Wednesday.
She'll be back Wednesday.
And I'll make a note to ask her.
Yeah, well, to ask her because I'm not paying for anyone. It's got to do with Facebook. Don't ever put that in our budget.
Kent, the Pogomire for East Smith Street? Is that the end of East Smith Street?
Still waiting for them to come back and do a section of curb. They skipped and they gotta do, they gotta redo all the yards. It's like quick, even before the rain. And they still need to do some ceiling work and.
Okay.
Should be the end of the engineering.
End of engineering, uh?
The contractor still has to get back.
But the things that they're coming back for, that's, that's already in their bid, right? Or if there's anything, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're sitting on a pay request until they get back.
Okay, wonderful.
Any other questions about the bills?
One more. The Lisa Laker Interior Design, $485, paying keys. Was that your department, Kent?
Yeah, most of that was for the Mason repaint.
Okay.
Now, there's a few obsolescent, like a couple rollers. Um, we needed a couple keys made so we could do the, on that PO, but most of that's the paint.
I had a quick question, too. Best equipment? We had a hose problem with the new back truck. Is that under warranty?
No, that was, uh, where did it get caught up at? But anyway, the one end, not the, not the head part, the actual hose part, was starting to wear through, so they came with their piece of, whatever you call it, cut off a part of the hose and you get attached to the head. They got special crimper or whatever you call it.
How much footage did we lose?
Only about 40 feet, give or take.
Okay, any other questions on the bills?
Why don't we just pay them?
Okay, I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Barth.
Stane.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Um, a notice of a public hearing, I think it's the next council meeting, um, considering a zoning request two weeks from tonight, 6 o'clock. This is submitted by the Hicksville Planning Commission as to rezone, so we have to vote on that. Any questions on that?
Well, you're gonna have the public hearing at the next meeting and then at the next meeting, I'll bring a resolution to, you know, approve it.
Okay.
The public meeting at the councils in case anybody from the public wants to come and voice, you know, concerns or support or whatever.
Okay, boards and commissions, the nuisance board, met October the 6th. Your minutes are in your packet. Any questions on that?
Is this the list of all the nuisance properties they have?
That, no.
Okay. I'm always curious what was brought up.
Okay.
I think the list consisted, the last time that I spoke with Mike, there was like 112 or 115 properties that had been notified for something through the course of the last, of this year, whether it be for, for some kind of trash or sidewalk or something that's in his division. It's.
Any other questions on the nuisance board? Okay, the planning, zoning, met October the 8th. The minutes are in the packets and that's, had a chance to read that and that's what the, uh, we're gonna talk in public hearing November 2nd. Kinda gives the details on that. And the Hicksville TV minutes, Hicks TV, any questions on that? They met September the 19th. Okay, any council committee reports? No minutes were submitted. Anybody have, did any committee need?
I have a quick question for Eric. Finance, have you heard anything from Cheryl?
She was waiting till the audit got finished. I see we paid the auditor for the, for the audit.
Yeah, they're done.
I was gonna ask.
Yeah. She just got the report from the auditor.
In fact, that's what part of your ethics things are from, the auditor.
Actually, we need to set up a date for finance. The one, the report was done, so.
That report was done Thursday.
Okay.
Okay, any other committees have any report?
So you're not meeting this Thursday at 4:00? Because I had that job done.
You have that down?
Okay.
Well, no, I don't care. I get, uh.
Why you're talking about that?
I have that job down. I know I can't make that work. Possibly, we'll see. Well, depends what happens. I'm scheduled to drive bus that night till, uh, that was an add-on.
Is that what you had? I just thought that's what I was.
Finance? I didn't have, nobody said anything to me about finance.
It's four o'clock, right?
We picked a day and Cheryl said we had to wait till it got the audit completely back, so I just kinda scratched it off. We gotta pick a date later. She's gonna rush into a date until she has some paperwork back.
She's not getting back.
And I don't even think she has the paperwork back. She just had the personal, the one-on-one meeting, so I think we're still even waiting on the actual paperwork.
Okay, I'd like to be at that meeting, just let me know.
Eric, something. I have a quick question, though. Has anybody ever done any more with that? If I might get the wording wrong. The downtown revitalization kinda grant that was kinda floating around out there, has any businesses or any buildings?
I think it was really only two of them that were considering it, right?
I just hadn't heard any more about it here for a while.
When the third one dropped off, a third one signed up.
Oh, okay.
And right now, everything's pushed back into 2021.
But they're still trying to work with their building?
Yeah, I guess.
Most of it's, basically, from what, the way I understand this application, you had to get submitted and then approved by the state as a potential project, essentially. And I think the application's all in. It's just a matter of, I think the state spent part, spent part of that funding.
Yes, that's true.
I don't know if they've decided anything on any of the projects or not, but you'll know something next year.
I knew some of them were doing it. I just didn't know if it was still happening or if I could get it done for them.
Okay, any other discussion on committees? All right, Kent, administrative report?
Nothing.
Any update from CSX on my doc opening?
Nope.
I didn't answer for it.
Some of them things you just gotta ask.
I see you're getting a lot of leaves out there.
They've done 11 votes since last Wednesday. They did four this afternoon after the meeting, so.
Any other questions for Kent? All right, solicitors report? Troy?
Yeah, first ordinance 2020-16, a second reading by caption only, an ordinance agreeing approval and consent to the director of the Ohio Department of Transportation Authority to apply, maintain and repair standard longitudinal pavement marking and erect regulatory and warning signs on state highways inside the village corporate limits and giving consent of the village for the Ohio Department of Transportation to remove snow and ice and use snow and ice control material on state highways inside the village corporate limits and giving consent of the village for the Ohio Department of Transportation to perform maintenance and/or repair on state highways inside the village corporation. That was a mouthful.
Any questions on that one? I know it's second reading, but.
It's the second reading, yeah.
Okay.
Then ordinance 2020, I guess the one Cheryl passed out just has the X's on it, but should be 17, is a first reading by caption only, an ordinance adopting chapter 1315 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio regarding placement of house and building numbers. Um, again, it's just a first reading. I know I got copied on comments between Kent and Ron with some issues that they'd like to see addressed, so that's not in here, but before the next meeting, we'll try. If anybody else has any comments or suggestions or whatever, we can try and get it incorporated before the next reading.
I just had a question about, did you guys clarify whose responsibility it is to enforce this? Is it a zoning issue or a PD issue?
Put it in the zoning, the ordinance, it'll be yes. I like that, but whatever. I was just saying.
And again, I went with the place that it looked like it would most logically fit in the code is all. And where other, quite frankly, I looked to see what other, some other communities where they had it.
Which is still zoned.
Right, right, right. I don't personally have any preference. That just seemed like the logical place for it to go. Um, so I know the couple of things that we have talked about before are the penalty amount and, and how high it is, so we can do something with that for sure. Um, and then there was a question on the definition to where it would include things like the press box at the school and stuff like that. So we're gonna find a way to tweak the definition a little bit so that those type of facilities aren't necessarily required to follow. But if anybody else has any suggestions, comments, or whatever, I'm trying to remember what.
The only two, I guess at this point is the placement of numbers.
Right.
Where it says, "and all other buildings," or anything like this.
Right.
If you wanna clear that up.
Right.
Otherwise, yeah. And then, uh, for a new house, it's got, you've got 30 days, you know, to get the address posted, but is there a time period for the existing people?
It's in there, as I recall.
60 days, isn't it?
Corey brought it up the last time I went there. It's, you get provided notice and you got, I think it's 30 days after.
That's for an after.
Uh, I think that's for the, any of them.
"We shall therefore become the duty of the owner or owners to affix said numbers within the 30 days after sending such notice."
Yeah.
How hard you reading that?
Yeah, but that goes with 131503, which is whenever a new street laid out, we assign
addresses of street owners. Those owners have 30 days to do it. That's how I read it, but if it's 30 for everybody, that's fine, just so the time comes.
Well, I'll clarify it, since it's enough of a question that four, five, seven people here can't decide, then that's probably not.
Take the gray out of there, will you?
Probably not clear enough. If, if the group here can't decide on it, then the general population probably have the same issue or.
I had some folks ask me about this, where they got, it's a cast, the stone is cast, the address, and with the clarification being the differentiation of the, the color of the numbers with the background of it. So are they going to be required to take paint and paint the inside of their cast stone? Or what's, how does that? By definition, the, the numbers need to be different than the background of the material that they're affixed to. So are we gonna make people with cast stone go paint the insides of their?
Mine is cast stone and, and, uh, I think the numbers are black in there. And it's a white, white stone about that square.
Me personally, as long as it's legible, it's fine.
Yeah, you just gotta decide on how, like you say, some of the ordinances that you look at, when they told them what font it had to be in and, you know, how far down the road do you wanna take it?
Seems like a H.O.A. issue.
Yeah, right, right. Um, you know, how, the size, the font, the location.
You might have to do the size, don't you? Kinda give a general idea.
General size, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Otherwise, you know, they'll be.
It would be like this big and say, hey, I, I got them. But, no, I.
Your block's too high.
Are there any, uh?
My block's too high.
Are there any addresses here in town that have, like a letter, like a, 112A, 112B, 112C?
Sure there probably are.
Yeah, but this only says that number 039 can be used, that state letters can be used.
Your apartment, I find something.
A, B, C, D. Building up here, it's apartment A, apartment B, but I'm in the process of, so like, and that's the thing up here, where you have the apartments above, that's, if that's an apartment A, but the building's 120.
Right.
For instance, do the apartments then have to have, like, do you have to have A and B legible? Because it's three, three different addresses. Right, what's the?
I would say the building personally, but, I mean, you come back to the same thing as, I guess if you wanna make sure the fire department or the police know where they're going, you make sure there's an A on your door or a B on your door or whatever, so.
Obviously, if you guys ever had an instance where you got into an apartment that had, you know, four or five units in it and you're looking for apartment A, apartment B, and you can't find them, they're not on the door, you know, you're knocking.
How's the American building identified?
Like, where, like 126? Apartment's 126 and a half.
It's 1695.
Are the apartments numbered?
It's numbers or letters. So, it's got numbers or letters with the, you know.
Which they may.
The address itself is 1695.
Those are numbered, are they?
Okay, we have two.
So there's a few, yeah, so.
So we can tweak it?
We'll have a tweak before the next one and then we'll see if there's still.
That is all right. We'll go, go it again?
Yep, and then the last thing I have is ordinance 2020-18, a first reading by caption only, an ordinance amending section 147.02 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to add to employee holidays, holidays. That's basically reinstating what we talked about before.
Okay, any questions for Troy?
And then once that's done.
This will not take effect until next year, right?
Correct. It's effective January 1st. Correct.
Okay, police chief, you're up.
All right, so there were some questions. We have scheduled the, well, I'm waiting for a start date with, uh, air conditioning and electric, and we're going with the generator that he had priced. The cost for, uh, it's a gasoline, not a diesel. If we went with, uh, natural gas or propane, it would be more. And, uh, so I had talked to Cheryl. Cheryl just told me, go ahead and schedule it. We're going with what we got. So, that's what I did.
You know gasoline unit cannot stay in that building.
So.
That's OSHA.
Nobody told me that.
That's why you can't have a gasoline forklift in a factory. No gasoline in the buildings.
Well, nobody has told me that.
You meant back there in the garage? I mean, the cars got gasoline in them.
Right, vehicles, uh, that can be backed out, go forward, done something, a, a unit, stationary unit.
Well, that unit would have to be wheeled out when they fired up. I mean, it doesn't stay in the building when they fired up, have to go outside.
I, I guess the reason I mentioned it would be definitely worth checking on that.
Sure.
Part of it before we.
Would that even be the same for diesel?
No, diesel's, diesel's not, diesel won't explode. We got fire chiefs and stuff sitting here. What's the word on that? What's the NIPD on that?
I'm gonna have to go get the book. I can't keep the whole book in my hand.
Maybe you could do that for the chief. You could check that out and, and see if it's permissible. Uh, but I know when I was current on, on my OSHA stuff and had my little certificate, that was a no-no.
All right, well, check that out.
Another week or two.
Uh, the other thing I had, Cheryl sent in the purchase orders for the two cruisers. Those were sent to statewide. There is no state pricing bid that's currently out. That doesn't come out till the end of October. And, and actually, we're getting probably a discount anyways because she's giving, we're getting 2021 cruisers for the 2020 price.
You were able to secure the 20, for the second one, 2020 pricing?
Yes, yes. So those purchase orders were submitted to statewide last week.
And their explorers?
Yep. So, they'll be black, just like, or black, we're gonna have the same color. It'll look the same, so. And then for the month of September, we had 300 and, I gotta look here, 98 calls for service. Yep, we had 398 calls for service for the month of September. So, and I think that's all I have, unless you guys have.
Any questions for Chief Denny? Okay, thanks, sure.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Mark.
Fire, any MS chief?
We opened the bids this afternoon for the stuff from the grant. We had one, truck manufacturers all that submitted for the tanker, so we're gonna go with them more than likely. I got a lot of reading to do and a lot of fine print to go through. Uh, the air packs and the air compressors, we had two of each. I have to separate through and figure what we're doing there. Hopefully, by next meeting, Troy will have something for us to.
Yeah, just email me the company, what it's for, and the amount, and I'll bring it. It'll be three separate resolutions, something like.
Okay. Um, if anybody's interested in getting on the fire department, they have openings. More than welcome to submit an application. Dawn has applications at her office, or you can stop at the fire station during the day. If they're not on a run, there should be somebody there. And I'd like to thank everybody for the support for the breakfast and 5K we had a couple weeks ago. It was well attended. That's about all I have.
Who spec'd your truck out?
Rosenbauer, South Dakota.
So you, you're getting, I mean, you know enough about trucks, you're getting a truck that's gonna have enough power and it's gonna have.
It's gonna be a Mack chassis with 455 motor.
Transmission?
Uh, Allison, 8-speed, I think.
Eight?
It's got plenty of torque and plenty of power.
So she'll be down, crawl if she has to.
Mm-hmm.
We had one over there, maybe we still, two, is it still there? It was just gutless.
Yeah.
It's still there?
Still there.
Okay.
It's gutless, but we can rely on it.
Yeah.
Any questions for Chief Kramer? Any other questions? Scott?
Thank you.
Kent, park, Val?
Oh, I don't know that much to say. I just wanted to let everybody know that the playground, McDonald's playground, has been renewed and taken.
Okay, any questions for Val?
No, but I would like to, since we're talking about the park, we, last time we met, we talked about the cameras at the park, where the picture quality wasn't the best. So I went down there and looked, went through all the NBRs and, uh, all the resolutions were set at the lowest setting, so I just bumped them all up and the picture quality's actually much better, so I think.
Well, thanks.
I know you've seen them, but, uh, one of the officers from the PD had seen it, they had used the one at Froggy Park, so everybody seems to think it made an improvement, so we shouldn't have to spend any money there.
Good deal.
Thanks for doing that, Corey.
Good job.
Okay.
I have a question on the park. Um, I went down, this is directed for you, Taylor. I went down and, and looked at where they're, they probably have already poured concrete. Uh, as you pull in, the first one on the left, how are you gonna make that transition back down to the asphalt?
I, they, they took it and ran when Walt got involved. I, so I'm, I'm not 100% sure. If, I believe they were talking about taking that asphalt out and then.
We did take the asphalt out.
The concrete will go, everything's gonna get put back up and concrete's gonna be on the opposite side, so that path will be paved with concrete instead of asphalt.
But you'll still have to, you, you've got that much variation.
If I recall what they were going to do, they talked about filling, filling that, lifting that up some. And then basically, there's, there's about 18 inches of fall from the high point between fields five and seven, but it came across where it falls back into.
To the stone parking lot.
Where the parking lot is. It was almost 18 inches to where it's paved, where the, where the tile swings across.
Right.
From the high point, so they were going to try to lift that up at a better grade, at a decent grade, and it not be too steep.
Who, I thought you were in charge of elevations, or I thought you had said you went down and did all the elevation. Who's, who's in charge of this project? Is it just a loose cannon down there?
The, it's the ball association and.
They had Walt Lonnicker, is that his name?
Yeah.
Down there shooting grade, that's all I know. I don't know the gentleman, but I guess he's been around a long time doing.
Yeah, Walt's a builder, but, but when I went down there and, and, you know, we, we came off of the backside and it's, it's all level and would drain to the, where they put the pipe up, it will, they didn't need that, it will drain out to that catch basin that's right in the middle by that little pavilion thingy. But then when you drop two feet to the asphalt, somehow to make a transition from that, even if you raised the asphalt up, you still have to make a transition now on this side as, along with this side, and it all has to be ADA acceptable and still run water without any additional drainage. It scared me, I went home.
When's the last time you were there?
Last week.
Yeah, that, the asphalt's all tore out and everything. And they had to frame for the concrete.
Yeah, I thought it was Saturday when I was down there.
I don't know how they got the asphalt in the slabs out like that.
Oh, well, they need to, but I don't have any authority to tell them that's not, that's wrong or anything.
So what, what asphalt did they tear out? I mean, I was curious.
I think in the middle of the walkway going to the.
From the, from the parking up front.
To the pavilion.
Pavilion.
They tore all that out?
So the concrete is going to extend to the other side of the asphalt.
Yes.
So it's just the paved path is still paved.
But the nature work grant people that gave us money to do that, you're going to be real happy.
You sure?
Whatever. Again, that wasn't part of the original plan.
Is there a plan?
Well, it's supposed to be just a seating area.
That's what I thought. But anyway.
The seating area, the tiered seating with canopy area for flat concrete, not blacktop area, that's, that was all worth, like you said, safety area money from that, where that chain link was at all the way back.
And it, and it.
I assume they're going to put concrete on both sides.
Transition into the stones all the way around. Now, now it's going to be really bad on this side and really bad on this side and, and I think you got, I think you got a loose cannon down there. I mean, who would I talk to if I, if I said, who's, if I walked in on that job and said, I want to know who's in charge, who would it be?
Ball association, that's the answer I have.
Ball association, yeah. I'm glad Justin, he's the one that came to us.
You can't talk to a ball association, you got to talk to a person. I want to know who's in charge, who's saying that you tear out asphalt and saying that you put something two foot higher. I want to know that man so that I can talk to him.
Justin Coon is who came to our council meeting.
Justin Coon.
That's who I would, he's the one that came and asked for our blessing.
And so, oh, I was obviously not at that meeting.
Well, you might not have been.
So if, if he came here and got your blessing, then you okayed tearing out asphalt and, and all this stuff?
Then go into detail, if I remember the conversation.
So maybe we as a council dropped the ball.
Sort of what I was talking about last week. We can have detailed plans.
I don't think they do either. I think this just. I don't know, I mean, if y'all are happy with what's going on down there, I'll keep my nose out of it, but I just, it just wasn't good to me.
Well, when they came here last time, it was they had 20 some thousand dollars they're going to dump into it, and they had company from Fort Wayne donating or giving a discounted price towards concrete, like from 140 or 145 down to 105 bucks a yard. They had all the volunteers going to remove the stone area, not the blacktop or anything, frame stuff up, and they had pictures of what it was going to look like. They had our, had all the stadium shares already, I guess, reserved, as long as we, we got, got our blessing, who's going to go down to Tennessee or Kentucky to go pick them all up and show pictures of what it would look like, hopefully in the future.
Somebody, excuse me, was it you that said that that deal fell through on those stadiums?
Oh, the ones in Atlanta.
Atlanta.
The ones in Tennessee, he found some in Tennessee, I guess. But it was supposed to be removed, some of the dirt, frame it in, have concrete tiered seating, it's going to be ADA compliant, and they're going to have an area that was flat concrete with some shade up along the, so if you want to bring your lawn chair or whatever, and that's what we agreed to, them doing the work, them using their money, but it wasn't any of the ripping out blacktop or nothing like that. And Ken said from the beginning, you know, like to have a little more details.
Okay, any other discussion? I can make a call to Justin, find out.
Somebody needs to know.
Yeah, I'll do that tomorrow. Try to get a little clarification. Good point, though. Any other discussion? Okay, Dawn, fiscal officer report?
You have your fund status report, and the big thing, Cheryl wanted each of you to have your ethics packets personally hand-delivered, and please read those, the audit. Talks about ethics and they read all of council minutes, they keep track of a lot of different things, so.
There's no test at the end, is there?
They're really leaning toward ethics and for everyone to be very ethical.
Yeah, I don't want to spill the beans too much, but they've already been asking for some things that'll probably not show up till the next audit, so yes. If you don't want to be getting dinged personally or us dinged, you need to read through that stuff.
It is very important.
Anything I've been doing, thankfully.
Okay, any other questions for Dawn? Okay, did everybody get an invitation to CIC Investor in the mail?
No.
Okay, I'll, I don't know if you will, I'm guessing you will. It came to me, but the 2020 CIC Investor reception is Thursday, November the 12th. That's a couple, few weeks. Starting at 5:30, it's on the second story, that's the name of the building, 210 Clinton Call me if you're interested. I'm guessing you'll get this, I just got mine today. I'm a member of the CIC, so maybe that's a reason. So if anybody's interested, let me know. They have hors d'oeuvres and drinks at 5:30. It lasts till about 7:00. I'm planning to go myself. I know the chief didn't read, we were talking today at mayor's court, still having problems with the radio. Is it the Mark Street? Is that the name of it?
Yes.
And so I made a call to Matt Handicrat, trying to get this resolved, but you had a good conversation with him today, he called you, and they're going to send somebody down.
He wants someone to come down, at least spend eight hours down there so they can see. I played audio this morning for the mayor to hear of the radio traffic that was from today. It was bad. Bob can tell you.
But I approached it, you know, it's a safety issue. If you need some help or communication that's not there, it just cuts out, so.
I know you had a discussion with him about the old radio system.
Yeah, the VHS.
The old radio system.
But, you know, the citizens are paying a levy for the 911, so had a good conversation and I told him to call you, try to get it resolved. So we'll see what happens. Just wanted the council to be aware of it. We've talked about it before, we've had some issues, so it's still not resolved, so.
How far did it go when Matt got hold of you?
What's that?
How far did it get after Matt got hold of you?
That he's going to get hold of a listening vendor, I'm not sure that he down here do, but as I told him, I said, they've been down, they've looked at the repeaters, they've looked at the radios, they said there's not an issue, they replaced or fixed the radio that was in 29, which is the black SUV, because it was getting hot. That was just put back in a few weeks ago. This morning, I was having problems with that radio and the repeater, and started going back looking at things where we're having issues, and I think it might be a repeater issue.
Well, didn't they tell you earlier that, that it could be a repeater issue and that possibly somewhere around Mark Center to Sherwood that we need to install a repeater?
Well, that would be a tower that would, they would need, which, but there's a repeater built into the car, and the repeater system works, so if I'm outside my car and that repeater is on, and I talk on that portable radio, it transmits from the portable radio back to the repeater at the car, and then it's transmitting to the sheriff's office, so it's basically going back to the radio and the repeater that's inside the car and transmitting back to there. That's how the repeater system is designed for portable. But we're, we're having problems with the mobile radio that's inside the car. Like today, I could not, we couldn't hear anything the dispatcher was even telling me today, and that's on the mobile. There should be absolutely no issue with me hearing dispatch, all right, because it's coming from them to me, and I shouldn't have an issue of hearing them. And this morning, when I shut the repeater off, I radioed back in and it was clear. Two weeks ago, we were on an injury accident uptown here, Bob was on his portable without the repeater channel on, Garrett and I were on the repeater channel, and we couldn't hear anything they were telling us. Bob was relaying the info to us, and he wasn't on the repeater. So I'm thinking the comedy I'm hearing is the repeater. Matt says maybe the frequencies need to be changed on the repeater, you know, but it's still, it's just a common issue, it doesn't matter where we go in Hicksville, you know.
Is that something to consider as we talk about taking this water tower down and new towers, that sort of thing? Are they going to be part of that conversation?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so if we go, so if it comes down to it, that we have to put the old radio systems back in, we will need those, all those antennas on that. So wherever that is taken down or it has to be re-put, put back up somewhere, because that's where our old radio system will operate.
Because we had better radios than what we got now. They worked better.
So anyway, got the ball rolling again. We'll see what happens. We're going to keep on them.
So we'll see what, I mean, that's going to be our final option, I think, is put the old radio system back in if we can't figure it out. And I don't think we have to pay.
I see, because when, the whole levy, they came up here and told us, you know, vote for the levy and everything. So all your fire, police, everyone's going to have their own radios, we're going to supply everything. No money out of our pocket.
Now, Scott, you don't have any problems with them, right?
We don't use ours as much. I was out during a storm and I had trouble on my portable, more on the south end of town, the lower end. Does your radios in the car are different than the ones we have?
Are they different?
I think they're different than the ones we have.
I know the Motorola and the Sile.
Yeah, we have Motorola's too, but I use a different model.
Yeah, I've never really looked at, never seen what your mobiles look like.
We haven't, our repeater hasn't been installed yet, and the new squad's getting a repeater put in, and it's not been installed yet.
So that falls in with what he just said, is it works better without a repeater?
So the vendor, you said the guy, person named Bender is going to come look at, who's he with?
Bender is a company out of Toledo. That's who put the radios and stuff in. The last, what's the name of the company?
P and R Communications.
P and R came down and examined them as a second opinion.
I was just going to give you another company, because I use more electronics out of Lakesley, and they do all the bus reuses and everything. Handholds in the school to the buses.
Problem is, it's not us paying for it.
Right.
If I bring somebody else in, then they're just paying for it. But they had P and R come down to look at it as a second opinion. They're the ones that also put up the antenna at our office, you know, so they didn't find anything wrong with the reuses or the repeater. Something's got to be wrong, I mean.
Are you guys the only ones having problems? I mean, county, the city, everybody else is fine.
Had county deputies tell us that they have problems when they come to the West End.
Everything works until you get to the West End.
And, you know, Matt told me the day is that it's at least another year away for, you know, a year to two years away from us getting a tower up on the West End.
Over a million dollars, he told me.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're still, the commissioners are working on trying to get grants and, but we're still a good year and a half to two years away before that's even.
Okay. I just wanted the council to know we're still having issues, so keep on them. Thanks, Mark. Anything else that needs to be brought before this council?
Make a motion adjourned.
I'll second that motion. Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Major adjourned.